Yes.
Yeah.
Everyone ready? Okay. I want to start the September Board of Supervisors meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. We have Bob Cooney here, Susan Garrett, Danielle Joen, Mark Donovan, and Martha Majeski. We also have our Township Manager Lori Gatz, our Solicitor Bill Brennan, our Township Engineer Paul Bettinger. Okay. And Tina, I am totally embarrassed. I have no idea.
What? Stevens.
Tina Stevens, our new Township Secretary. I knew it was Tina. So our new Township Secretary. I want to introduce everyone to Tina. Okay. Wanted to announce we had an executive session this evening before our meeting started where we discussed potential litigation and property acquisition. First agenda item, we have a bid opening for the 2022-2023 Equipment Rental and Snow Removal Contract.
Yes, now bear with me because I have just developed a new skill, which is PennBid. So we did get, and I got logged out while I was sitting here, so we received one bid. We advertised this and we talked about this at the last meeting, so we did run this bid through PennBid, which opens it up pretty much statewide for bidders. So we did get... There were quite a few companies that expressed interest. You can see the list. I have it up on the screen here. Unfortunately, of those, only one submitted a bid this afternoon.
Oh, this afternoon? Wow, talk about the deadline.
Yeah, they closed at 4:30. They closed at 4:30.
And what did they do? Send it at 4:29?
No, this one came in early, actually. Sorry, I have to pull my instructions. I've never used it before.
Lori, so you, you, there was one bid prior to today and then one bid today?
No.
No, just one bid.
Just the one bid.
We received just one bid.
Today, okay.
It, today was the deadline. It was, the bid was due by 4:30 this afternoon. So I am going to open the sealed.
Well, that's exciting.
So the bid came in from Cedar Springs Construction. They are the contractor that has bid for us every other year. There were some other companies that expressed interest, but based on what we saw, it looks like they were not, they were not local. Some of them, we suspect, actually thought that we were in Spookel County, not Manchester County. So we did, we did just get the one bid, so.
Do you have the amount?
Yeah. Just have to see where to get it from. So the total bid. Thinking. Four hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred.
Four hundred and eighty-two thousand.
Five hundred.
Five hundred.
Total, that's the total bid.
How's that compared to last year?
It's up from last year. Last year, yeah.
It sounds like a lot up.
It's almost a hundred thousand.
It's about a hundred thousand.
Wow. Is it, do they itemize it as due to fuel costs?
They do itemize it. In fact, I have last year's bid with me. Equipment cost is up. Wow, that's up significantly. Oh, no, I'm sorry. That's, yeah, that's up significantly.
Yeah.
The equipment is?
The equipment cost is up a lot, which I'm sure, it doesn't tell me exactly why, but I would, I would assume due to increased fuel costs.
And part costs, like replacement parts cost?
Absolutely. Labor. Labor is up sixty, is that?
It says fifteen hundred an hour.
Is that right?
Says fifteen hundred dollars an hour. Is that, is that what it says?
That is what, that's exactly what I was.
Did they maybe put in one, it should have been one?
Except for truck or is that for a person?
Should that have been one fifty?
Were they hiring?
Gay in line.
I think.
They may have entered it wrong.
It's possible that the... Wrong.
Could that be per day?
What was it listed as last year?
That's the quantity.
Okay.
That's fifteen hundred hours.
That's fifteen hundred hours.
It's eighty-two thousand, five hundred. That is up. Last year it was seventy-two thousand, so it is up, but it's not as astronomical.
So it sounds like everything.
Everything is up.
Everything is up. It's not just one line item that's up.
Every single one is up.
But we're talking about a hundred thousand dollar increase, more or less? I mean, that's a little bit more than the rate of inflation.
Is there any way to, like, talk to other companies and see what they, I mean, I just feel like, how can we prove this without having increase without even having another bid to compare it to?
We run the. Careful about if you do that, you're going to rebid it. And then if you're calling on others and saying, "What would you have bid?", it can get a little bit concerning in terms of whether you're promoting somebody else or interfering with the bid process. It's supposed to be totally blind. So, and I haven't researched it. I'll be happy to take a look, but I'd be a little, I mean, the process is if you're not happy with it, reject it and then rebid, but there's a timing problem here, I think, with the weather and everything else.
Contract expires September 30th.
And this is for salt and winter?
This is for equipment rental, which includes paving and road maintenance and snow removal, yes.
And all the park stuff that we do, anything in the parks.
How does it work again? Refresh my memory. If we have a very light year of snow.
Then we don't spend the money.
It's berated or, yeah, okay.
So that, yeah, and the bid is based on an estimated number of labor hours. So, you know, they're giving us the cost, the hourly rate bid if we don't, like, as of right now, we haven't spent all of the 2022 money.
So there's no fixed cost aspect, I'm sorry, there's no fixed cost aspect of it?
Right.
There's no component of this bid that is basically to stand by, you know, to have the equipment available to us?
What, um.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
So if we, if we have eighty-degree weather all winter, we incur zero.
Right. Then we don't pay them for?
Those snow removal fees. We would still have equipment rentals.
But we would still have, that's what I'm asking. So there's still.
For like the roads and stuff.
Okay, so there's still the equipment rental component of it.
Correct.
Can I go further with that question and say, if we don't do any road work and it's eighty degrees, could it be possibly zero if we do nothing?
No work associated with what they do.
I'm just taking the question to a certain.
There's got, there's got to be, I'm just wondering, there's got to be an aspect of this, of this contract that's a, that's a fixed fee, just so that they have the equipment available for our use.
Well, I think it's a requirements contractor that goes over this. They have to keep supplying.
Right.
But if it's.
And if it goes under, we don't have to ask for it.
I think they can safely assume there will be at least some work, so that's, that's priced into the bid, I think.
But I guess if, so if we don't have this amount budgeted, because this is so significantly above what we thought it was going to be, could we just, if we had to, not do as much paving this year?
Yes, well, and this is for, we're already done. That's, and, yes, but this is for '23.
Yeah, for next.
So we've already completed.
But to answer your question, that actually happened to us back in 2014. We used this entire budget by the end of March. Oh, no, I'm sorry, by the end of February.
2014 was brutal.
Yes, it was very brutal. And they, we, we still had them on contract, but we went over and above.
Right.
But what we did was Nick went through and said, "You know what? We're not doing this, this year. We're not doing this this year. We're not doing this this year." Because we went a hundred thousand dollars over budget.
Good.
So, yes, yeah.
Yeah, and, and we've done some of that this year, too, with some of the projects that we've pulled back because of increased costs this year, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not tied to anything.
We're not locked into paying this amount if there's some issue with our budget, okay.
That's right.
Have we done an analysis as to the, what it would cost us to, to purchase and own some of this equipment over the long term and at what point it would make financial sense for us to, to acquire the equipment on our own? I mean, I know that there's other considerations of that, now we have to maintain it and.
The labor is the bigger.
The labor is the biggest.
Okay. The, the equipment comes with people.
Yeah.
So we get, yeah, so we get a, a lot of additional staff that are not on township payroll.
Fifteen hundred hours worth by that estimate. Which is significant.
Yeah, and that's just for, and that's not incorporating winter.
Yeah, yeah, the winter stuff is.
The winter maintenance, where at any given time they're running, I just had Susan pull it today, and she said of one of the invoices, there were twenty trucks running at once, and we.
Okay.
So we, we have three, three employees plus roadmaster.
Running at once, ever, okay.
So you do not, we do not award the bid tonight. You do it subject to.
Right.
Full review of businesses, obviously, just.
So I have consideration of the award of Spookel Township 2022-2023 Equipment Rental and Snow Removal Contract to Cedar Springs, is that Cedar Springs Incorporated?
Construction.
Cedar.
Cedar Springs Construction, something.
Cedar Springs is fine.
Okay, to Cedar Springs in the amount of four hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, contingent upon a bid compliance review by the Township Manager, the Roadmaster, and the Township Solicitor. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Any more comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'll let, Lori, you'll take care of making sure that everything is compliant with what we need?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I can, I'll download it and.
I can send it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Give me just a second here, guys. We have two public hearings this evening. Number one is the Comcast Cable Franchise Agreement. "Good evening. This is a public hearing of the Spookel Township Board of Supervisors regarding the cable franchise renewal for Spookel Township. This public hearing is held pursuant to Section 626 of the Federal Cable Act, which sets forth the process for the franchise renewal. The township's current franchise with Comcast is within the industry norm renewal window, and the township is in the process of renewing the franchise. This public hearing is part of the preliminary portion of the franchise renewal in which the township reviews the cable operator's past performance and identifies the township's future cable-related community needs. As such, as part of this public hearing, we invite comments from any citizens who wish to speak regarding either or both of the aforementioned subjects. Franchise renewal is the best opportunity for municipalities to assert their rights with respect to their cable operator and to obtain important benefits in return for granting the cable operator the right to use their public right-of-ways. These benefits include, one, a state-of-the-art cable system now and in the future; two, strong customer service standards; three, free services to community facilities; four, better reporting requirements from the cable operators; five, maximized franchise fees; six, public, educational, and government..."
What's PEG?
PEG is Public Educational and Governmental.
Oh.
Public access.
Okay.
Television, basically.
Channels, I'm sorry. Number six, public, educational, and government channels if desired; PEG capital-supporting funding if desired; number eight, legal protections of the right-of-ways; and number nine, better mechanics, mechanisms to enforce the franchise agreement. These are just some of the potential benefits available through franchise renewal. Citizens may address these items or any other cable-related items that are important to them. We now open the hearing up to citizen comments. Thank you. Anyone have any comments?
We're good to go.
Does anyone from the board have any comments?
No.
Okay, I'll make, do I have to, do I just adjourn it or do I have to make the motion to adjourn it?
You can just adjourn it.
Okay. I consider this hearing adjourned. Okay. Our second public hearing, Act 167 Stormwater Management Ordinance Model Ordinance. I consider this hearing open, and I am going to hand it over to Lori Gatz.
Yes, so the purpose of this hearing is to open the floor up for public comments as it relates to the model stormwater ordinance that the township will be implementing as, as required by the state and by the county. So the way we're going to do this is Paul has graciously analyzed the differences between the ordinance that currently exists and the ones that, that we're being required to adopt. So we're just going to go through the areas, much of the ordinance, we have no say in, we can't make any changes to, we have to adopt it as is. But there are certain aspects that the township has the ability to implement stricter standards than what is coming down to the model ordinance. So those are the aspects that Paul is going to review for discussion.
Correct, thank you. So as we discussed the, previously, the July 18th, 2022 memo that we have prepared based off the proposed county-wide Act 167 Stormwater Management Ordinance. I talked to Lori today, and the way I was going to, to discuss this is that there are a lot of different items that are in this ordinance that are just changing verbiage, making things consistent, et cetera. There's nothing that the township can do that's going to be consistent among all townships in Chester County. There were a couple of aspects that, like, that Lori had referenced. There is flexibility for the township to consider, and I'd like to bring those to your attention as we go through. The first one would be on page six of the memo. It is number thirteen. I don't know, does everyone have a copy of this? Okay, perfect. So in this, in this particular section, the, the new draft ordinance has different runoff requirements for the storm events going from the one-year storm up to the hundred-year storm. The township presently has more conservative requirements than what the new Stormwater Management Ordinance is, is requiring. You are given the flexibility to have what you, what was previously within the township, and it was my recommendation to maintain this for the township. I don't know, it just is.
When do you need a decision about this? Is that what we're doing tonight?
Correct.
Okay. How do we, how do we vote on this? Or do we just discuss it and come up with a?
Do we?
I would think that we discuss, that you would discuss it and then we would prepare the resolution accordingly.
And then you'll vote on it next time.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I will present the.
Okay.
Because we'll advertise it this month.
Okay. Um, I don't think we should go more strict than what we have now, and I'm satisfied with what we have now. I don't know how you guys feel about that. But that's my opinion.
I wouldn't retreat off how strict we are, though, so I wouldn't go back, I wouldn't do the draft, I wouldn't do the draft model.
Right.
Levels I would stay at are existing.
Right, exactly.
And that's our recommendation as well, Mark. We would like to maintain what the township currently has as a regulation.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Bob?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
So the next item would be on page number seven, and it's at the bottom. It's number twenty. Now, this is the, the part of the ordinance where it's talking about the, the reviewing of the, the BMPs that are installed on properties. This was the, there's option one and there's option two. Option one would be that the township would do the inspections themselves, whether it be your township engineer or an outside firm to complete them. Option number two would be the owner of the BMP would be required to do this, and the township administrative staff would have to verify that this is being done. Now, the, the criteria of this is that the BFPs have to be inspected annually for the first five years. Additionally, they have to be inspected once every three years afterwards. And then this is where it differs. If you do option one, which would be the township staff, engineer, or a specific inspector, it would be during or immediately after the succession of a twenty-five-year or greater storm event. If you went with option two, which would be the property owner or the person who is the legal entity controlling it, it would be after every ten-year storm. So again, the, once the ten-year storm event would occur, the township would have to let everyone who has a BMP know that they have to prepare an inspection report. Did it function as needed? Was there a failure? Is there any maintenance to be done? This, this is really up for the supervisors to determine on how you want to move forward on this. I did solicit from the Chester County Water Resources Authority if there was any fee programs or, or that they could provide to us, and they didn't give anything with any real detail. So one of the things that I had talked with Lori previously is that if there is going to be a fee schedule that's going to be introduced, that would be separate of the stormwater management ordinance. And so therefore, if the fees would ever be required to change, we wouldn't have to go through the readoption of the ordinance. So I know this is, it has been a discussion point amongst the board previously, so.
This is very unhappy news for property owners and for us. Option one requires somebody to pay us to do all this. Option number two, what do we do if they don't do it? So this is going to be on staff just crazy, but.
Yeah. It sounds, it sounds like the second option would be the easier one, even though there's, with the ten-year storm, there's a ten percent chance versus a four percent chance with the, with the twenty-five-year storm. But, but even then, the ten-year, then you don't have to send somebody out. You can.
We'd send a letter, basically.
You produce, you produce a mailing, let's just send a form letter out saying inspect all of their BMPs. And that's what we kind of do.
Yeah, when, when we're going to do the BMP inspections for the MS4 program, we, we, we send a letter out to the homeowners. Now, we don't have to do that every single year of all of this. Now, what we have done is we've done it in quadrants around the township to, to move forward in the five-year program. What this is saying is that every time, you know, as soon as someone puts in a big BMP with their pool for the first five years, the township is going to have to reach out to them at least once a year. Every time there's a ten-year storm event, they'll have to, they'll have to inspect and just verify that there's been no damage. I mean, we would have to prepare a very general form letter.
Yep.
And, but the reason I'm saying administratively is that someone's going to have to logistically chase after this for compliance. Now, the DEP, in the various workshops I attended, never talked about what the penalty was for an individual.
Of course not.
Who, who, who doesn't comply with this, nor a township that can't comply with this. So it, it, it seemed as if they, they, they were discussing, like, you do the best you can, but they didn't talk about what would be the penalty if, if you did nothing? Or if you could only get half the people to respond, or, you know, is there some kind of great success story?
Where, I just want to make sure I have the language in front of me. I looked at this this morning, but I can't, is it, it's not in the VOS Business Meeting subfolder?
Yeah, it is. It's in the hearings, it's public hearings.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you. Sorry. I, I had looked at it this morning. I just want to have the language in front of me for this.
Third one down.
It's on page seven.
Memo, the memo, okay.
Page seven into page eight.
Okay, great, thank you.
Number twenty. I'm tending to lean to number two.
Neither is a good option.
Yeah, neither's good, but.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, but.
Does this, so when we adopt this, this is like a standalone ordinance?
Yes.
And it doesn't have, it, it, used to be said it doesn't have any penalties built in?
Not the, not the, we're.
Is, so.
Right.
Which makes option one difficult if we are.
Yeah, option one's even more, but let's go with option two.
Or forcing residents to pay.
I would assume that the teeth of this would be is that the residents would have to do the ten-year storm event once notified by the township, so there would need to be a database. Failure to comply with that, without that, would require township staff to go out there and do an investigation, whether it be the township engineer or an outside entity to do it.
And the, the penalty is they pay for your time?
That, that's what I would assume would be the.
And we'd have to put a tax lien if they don't, I mean, what would be our recourse if they don't, if they don't reimburse the township for those engineering services?
You can generally cite them on a non-traffic citation under the ordinance for not paying fees to the township, required fees.
It's a good point. There's normally information about what happens from the, from the.
Bill, can you talk louder into the microphone?
All right, yeah, I'm, I'll have to look into it because normally with freestanding ordinances, they have to have a separate section about penalties. The MPC says with zoning and salvo what you do, but there's case law that says that stormwater is not a zoning ordinance, so. I, I suppose we could, you know, try to have them cited for violation of the ordinance in general based on this term and as a penalty, however the costs incurred, but I'd be happier if there was a section in here telling us what to do.
Is, do we have the, the ability, do we have the discretion to write a sentence in here that states what the penalties would be?
We could suggest it. We, we, this is tightly controlled by the county.
It, it is, and the DEP, I could reach out to the, or contact Chester County and say, can we write in if there's a penalty?
Or say, is, is there a way to do it? You know, is it automatic that we can, you know, get compliance if people just say they're not going to do it? What do we do then? And he might say, "Well, that's built in. It's baked in here somewhere, and we've had experience with that." And if they can tell us what that is, that'd be very helpful.
I just think it's, we don't want to be unfair to our residents and have them come back, oh my goodness, that's.
It's annoying.
Jarring. We don't want a resident to say that they didn't have notice that we were going to bill them for those costs. And what's, what's our authority to do that?
That, we could cover that in our fee schedule, though.
Yeah, you build it into the fee schedule, and isn't there like a general, general ordinance? Don't we have a general ordinance talking about if people skip out on the fee schedule for required, required costs? I would have to look into it.
Yeah, I don't know offhand.
I have.
I don't know offhand either.
I don't know if it's incorporated in ordinance or if it might just be in the fee schedule.
It might be incorporated directly into the fee schedule itself.
And that's what I was thinking.
But doesn't the, but doesn't this ordinance have to somehow reference that, the fee, I mean, give us the authority to?
I'll have to look into it. I mean, under the second-class township code, I think there's a section that deals with ordinances, and there may be a provision there that talks about penalties, but I'll have to check that. I'm not sure without looking.
Because I'm also leaning towards option two. Put it on, put it on the landowner.
Landowner.
Landowner at, at the outset, but then have the ability to go in and do the inspection if they don't comply. I just want to make sure it's clear.
But now, Paul, this is only for new stuff.
Correct.
This is not for. This is not for something that was built six months ago.
This would be as of adoption.
Yes, this would be a clarification on that, that it's for new.
It's as of whatever, how many?
As of the date, I guess, of ratification of the ordinance?
Or thirty days after that.
Is it thirty days or is it five days here?
It's as of.
Thirty days?
Thirty days. That's what we use.
That's what I thought. I thought it was thirty days after adoption.
You can pick, I think.
So we're going to have to somehow maintain a database of all of these.
Well, we have, we do it now.
Okay.
For different reasons. First, for the current stormwater management ordinance.
Stormwater.
You have to maintain, you have to manage, yeah.
Okay, so can we modify the existing database with a field that allows us to indicate whether they've been inspected or not inspected per?
Well, I think it does.
Okay.
Yeah.
And usually BMP regulations state that if there's a failure to maintain the BMP, the township reserves the right to go out there and take care of the facility, whether it's a basin or underground. So if they're failing to comply with the maintenance, the township usually has a blanket easement to allow them to go out there and to inspect it. It just, it would be a lot easier for the township if you can send this out to people and they can respond. Sure, there'll be people who will be obstinate to that.
Right. But at least that gives the residents an opportunity to not be, do it themselves and not have to assess a fee right away.
And less intrusion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And a lot of people do, I mean, I.
It's, the inspections aren't that cumbersome.
How many facilities like this do we have in the township right now?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I mean.
Are we talking dozens or are we talking a handful?
Probably dozens.
I would say dozens, easily.
Okay.
You know, mostly any kind of like stormwater management reading permit that has over a thousand square feet or five thousand square feet of disturbance is going to require some form of stormwater management.
So probably all fifty pools that were installed this year. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so.
I think option two.
I'm hearing option two.
Yes.
And I'll reach out to the Chester County Water Resources Authority to find out if they have any kind of penalty clause or anything they've gone through, and I'll update Lori accordingly.
Are you guys okay with number two?
We can see if it is just something that we can incorporate within our fee schedule, a penalty.
There's a suggestion at the very bottom here to incorporate a fee schedule for this, so.
Yes. Do, do we have, if we choose option two, is there a requirement that, that the homeowner or the landowner provide us a copy of that inspection report?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And otherwise, we, we're trying to find out how we compel them to do so if they don't.
Okay.
Whether that's the refine or not.
It would probably be beneficial to prepare just a very generic inspection report where, you know, that can be downloaded from the township website. So they could print it out, maybe even fill it in, just type the information in. And then a link that would get emailed back to the township, that would probably.
That would be great. I really like that idea.
Yeah.
And you have that, you're talking to the new website people that can do that kind of stuff?
I like that a lot because then it takes the vagueness out of whether they've complied with the requirement or not. I, that's great. That would be great.
Okay, so you have that answer, Paul?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Next one?
So going down, we're on page eight. Now we're in section D, number one. This is the simplified approach to stormwater management for small projects. I recommend that we do not do this. Again, I've gone through multiple reviews with this, and they've changed this to basically say it's only the roof leaders that are going down to the house. It's, it's, it doesn't really apply well for school and township. I think it's more for more rural townships. So it's my recommendation that that is not included with this for the township.
I'm okay with that. Mark? Danielle?
I'm fine. So just can you, I know we spoke about this at the July meeting. Can you elaborate on it a little bit? So it's the, what would this?
Certainly, the simplified approach is, it's basically a trench detail that what they, it would be underground, and if you were just putting in a small project, like, let's say you're expanding your driveway by a certain amount of square feet, you could take the area of your, if your roof, if your roof leader, and you can drag it and go underground. The reason that they have changed it prior to that, they didn't have any kind of regulation on it being a roof, but somebody was putting in the, like, trench next to their driveway, and it was taking the water in the driveway, but it was also taking all the water from their neighbor's property. So this, this little facility was being completely, you know, inundated on just a typical rainfall. So they have transformed the process to just saying that a drop of water that hits your roof is the only one that you can go through for a small project. And again, I just, this doesn't seem to fall in line with things that I have seen come through with school and township. And personally, with the amount of stormwater concerns the township has, I think we should go with just straight stormwater management, not simplified methods.
Okay, thank you. Susan?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Bob?
Great.
Okay.
So then going down again on page eight, number two, it's again talking about the simplified approach for stormwater management. Again, reiterate, I don't support that. It's the same.
Yep.
For eight, for page number eight, number three, it's talking about agricultural structures, and it's explaining that the municipality has even the ability to look at that. I don't support that either. I don't think we want to get into the argument of whether they're agricultural or not.
I agree, I agree with that.
And now we go to page number nine, number four. This is just talking about some additional language that can be put into the ordinance. We do recommend that this is added. It's talking about the, you know, low-impact development, conservation, design, things like that. It's very, this is reiterated all throughout the ordinance. They just give the townships, this is one where they say the township didn't have the option to add it or not. I suggest adding it. It's everywhere else.
You guys okay with that? Okay.
Page number nine, number five, that's talking about limits of disturbance of the existing ground cover due to regulated activity, regulated activities or disturbance or anything like that. We do, we do suggest that the township consider incorporating this section. And this is one, when we had the discussion, we were going to, just want to verify with your, with Bill, to make sure that we're not going to have any conflict with like a repairing buffer or anything like that.
Right.
I haven't done that check yet, so.
Okay. Yeah, that was just the one, when we had it before, it was the, it was the one concern, just making sure that we're not stating something and then conflict.
Conflict, having a conflict in something else in our ordinance.
Correct, yes. Is that one? Okay, go to the next. Okay, I apologize.
I'm sorry.
No, no.
Keep going.
So page number nine, number six, that is talking about some additional design criteria. Again, it's just, it's just some more verbiage. It doesn't really impact anything. I think we should, we should add that for the township, just to be conservative.
So what you're saying is that you want to add these two sentences? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, yes.
Okay, yes, I agree with that. Okay, okay, I agree with that. Mark, do you agree with that? Danielle? Susan, Bob? Okay.
Yeah, it gives the municipal engineer.
Okay, I misunderstood what you were looking for. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, I'm sorry. So page number nine, number seven, this is one that we have spoken about before. And this is the, the baseline for the stormwater management ordinance is twenty percent for existing impervious cover to be considered meadow. When you look at impervious cover, obviously when rain hits it, it'll run off a lot faster. When you're doing a new development and there is impervious cover, the DEP requires that twenty percent of that becomes meadow, good condition. So the more water gets sucked in, so that the amount of water in the post-developed condition gets drawn down as well. Twenty percent is the minimum that the new ordinance requires. They have given townships the ability to raise that up to forty percent. I recommend it going all the way up to forty percent to be conservative. This is one that the, you might want to have discussion with because, again, this will make development a little more challenging, and it will make BMPs a little bit larger. But again, this will help control stormwater management on individual properties, whether it's, whether it's an individual home or a big commercial site that would go in the township.
I, I'm okay with making the maximum requirement forty percent. Mark, are you?
I should note it can go anywhere between twenty and forty, so there's no magic.
I agree with what you recommend, though.
I would recommend forty for the township. We have enough stormwater management concerns as is. I would suggest anything that's new occur. We can try to be progressive with that.
We have, we are not expecting the, our stormwater issues to decrease in severity.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So.
So forty percent.
You guys okay with that?
Yep.
All right.
And, and that was it for all the discussion points for considerations for us to update the ordinance for presenting to you.
I just want to be clear. So this, this would apply thirty days after
We vote.
we vote to approve it. So any pending applications for development would not be subject to this.
Correct.
They would, they would be grandfathered to this if the submission was accepted by the township.
If you handed in your plans.
I think there's some flexibility in the ordinances. I've seen ordinances that are effective upon execution, and I've seen them five days, and I think.
Yeah, East Plaquenberry uses five days. We use thirty days typically, but we could probably do it enough.
Well, it's a matter of whether you want to give people notice that it's, that it's in place. So sometimes you want to stretch it out.
We could also take it, we could also take. We could also take enforcement discretion on it for a minute there, like with the private property owners, so we give them some time, but take it in, take it into immediate, immediate effect so that it, if we have pending or.
The, the problem is if you're going to provide discretion and enforcement, you have to make sure it's consistent. We can't, we can't, they can choose if you want to apply it, too. I would rather have a clear cutoff. I just wanted to know what that was. So if we have a development plan before the township today, this would not, this would not apply to that.
Yeah.
Correct.
And for something like this, you might want to put it out on the website and then have the thirty days built in so that at least there's an opportunity to give the public notice that this is coming into play.
So that, so that if somebody wanted to build a swimming pool with occurring. Yeah, they could rush it in and hurry up. Sorry, Paul.
Thirty days from adoption?
Adoption.
Yes.
It's up to you. You need the five days. I've seen five and thirty and then immediate.
And I think historically, we've done it in the township, any changes that we've made to the ordinance, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, we've done the thirty days because well, you can see we have an empty room, except for, you know, the few people that we always see.
For appeal rights, if people are.
Tell all your friends about the stormwater ordinance.
No, just, just because we want to give people an opportunity to, oh crap, I just heard about this. I need to hurry up and do something. So, and give them more than five days. I mean, I don't like to do that, but I think it's, it's just, I don't know, it just seems more open to our public.
So the ordinance would then take effect thirty days after the board goes on it at the next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I'm just thinking, playing it forward, how did this work? So we have a development plan today, but the development is not built until next June, and the stormwater facilities that are going to serve that development are not constructed until next December. Those stormwater facilities are not going to be subject to these inspections, even though they are built after the ordinance is in effect, because the development, the plan is.
Yeah, the old ordinance would still be.
Whatever the old ordinance says when you're binding, they're not off the hook, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a free-for-all. It's, it just goes back to the ordinance that we passed in twenty fourteen.
We're just going to have to track when for those, so just because something is built after the ordinance doesn't mean it's going to be subject to these inspections.
Correct. And again, with even a project that would have predated two thousand thirteen when this was adopted, a lot of projects, they would have BMPs and schedules and maintenance that they would be required to do. So for instance, if there was a development that was built in two thousand, and let's say their underground storage is failing and surcharging, you know, the DEP, if they became involved, they'd say, where are your inspection reports that you were supposed to be doing annually after all these, you know, rain events? And the responsible party might say, I don't have any of them. We never inspected. And then the DEP is going to be like, so there shouldn't be much of a surprise that the system failed. It's been never cleaned, it's been never vacuumed, it's never been retained. So a lot of BMPs and stormwater management facilities had maintenance schedules required when they were approved by townships and counties and things like that. I'm not impressed. If you go far, far back, like we're talking sixty, seventies, there certainly, there was no, basically then you would just mow the basin, you know, it was just common. But as, as we've progressed and stormwater management's become more complicated and more detailed, maintenance requirements have snowballed.
Any more comments from the board? Do we have any public comments? I consider this closed. Okay. Moving on to our regular business meeting, our consent agenda. Acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors' August third, two thousand twenty-two business meeting. All departmental committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of August, two thousand twenty-two. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? All those in favor?
I have to abstain because I wasn't here.
Right. Treasurer's report and payment of the bills for the period ending August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Consider, consideration of acceptance of the treasurer's report and approval to pay the bills. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Lori? Turn it over to you.
So, period ending August thirty-first, general fund balance is showing just over five million. As of that date, we have realized about seventy-six percent of our revenue. It's about ninety-seven percent of real estate taxes at this point, and about fifty-one percent of township expenses. And the bills have been reviewed and are recommended for payment.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Two-minute reports, board liaisons. Bob, do you have anything?
Nothing to report.
I'm sorry?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Susan? Danielle?
I was not at the, the last Phoenix.
Cleveland G.
No, Phoenixville Regional Planning Commission meeting, but I was at the one prior to that, and I didn't have the opportunity to report to the board at the August third meeting. I just wanted to briefly say that the, there was a consistency review discussed for the kindergarten center sale. There was a discussion on whether there should be some recommendation to the school district regarding the easement for a future Freedom Trail. So basically, the Schuylkill Freedom Trail was envisioned to extend from Valley Forge International Storage Park to Phoenixville through that property. And I don't believe that there was any consideration for reservation of an easement for that trail through the kindergarten sale. So there was some discussion. I'll have to follow up with the regional planning commission as to whether that was discussed further at the last meeting, which I wasn't able to attend. But I just think that we should be aware of that because that does impact our township, because that would be a trail that would go from downtown Phoenixville through the kindergarten center lot all the way to the Freedom Foundation. And so something that's being discussed.
You say the kindergarten.
So the kindergarten center, that was, is owned by the school district, the Second Street School?
Oh, okay.
It's owned by, it was, then it was the second, it was the elementary school and then the kindergarten center.
Right across from the old PMYC.
So it's, it's been sold. The two bidders were Phoenixville and Toll Brothers, I believe. And so the district, school district has decided to, directed the administration to start negotiating. And so the district, school district, has decided to, directed the administration to start negotiating the sale to Toll Brothers. We just should be aware that we don't believe that that sale was contingent on reservation of an easement for that trail. And so if we are, would like to maintain that trail, then we should perhaps through.
But that's in the borough, isn't it? That's not in Schuylkill Township. Yeah, okay.
So that's why the letter wouldn't come from us. It would come from the regional planning commission. So that's something that was discussed at that meeting.
Okay. Mark, do you have anything?
No.
I don't have anything either. The historical commission didn't meet this month. Yeah, the planning commission didn't meet. So, yeah, the historical commission didn't meet, so I don't have anything either.
We'll meet this month, yeah.
Yes. First time since January.
Okay.
Lori, I have nothing. It's not an agenda item.
Wow. I wasn't expecting that. Okay. Our chief of police, although he's not here, Bill, would you like to come on up here? Hate to put you on the hot seat here, but in order for it to get on the tape, he needs you to come up to the microphone.
Not a problem. I've just been asked to go over some community events upcoming involving the police department. Going in order of dates, Monday, September 26, from nine to seven, nine AM to seven PM. Church across the street, be a blood drive with the American Red Cross. Food drive will be starting October 1st to the 31st. It's going to have an in-person event here at the township building October 15th. Between those dates, on the 15th, it's nine to 12. The month-long drop-off at the township building is nine to five. The coffee event that we had previously that was fairly successful, we're going to repeat that again. Thursday, October 20th, from eight to 10:00 in the morning at My Favorite Muffin, 11:30 Valley Forge Road. The Code Drive is November 1st to January 31st, the longest one. And the Code Blue Shelter, I think we did that two years ago, November 1st to the 30th. And they're asking for toiletries, trash bags, sandwich bags, and socks. We're going to have all this on the website, hopefully, and also it's already on our Facebook page. So you can look up the dates and times for that. Just off the cuff, I just wanted to make the board aware, because we've been a little bit busy with the situation here. Last Friday night, the regional SWAT team was called up to Marsh Creek Park for a suicidal subject with a gun. And hadn't realized how developed Marsh Creek Park area is. The lake, the park itself is big enough, but then the residential areas kind of made it pretty much a nightmare to find this individual. We did find him, and I'm very proud to say that Eric Shallas, one of our police officers, negotiated with him face-to-face and was instrumental in getting him to put the gun down and surrender. So it was a very good ending to that. I just wanted to update you all on that.
Oh, that's great. That's good to know. Yeah, good job.
And I have some information on the chief that I'll share with all of you later. But he said to send his regards.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you have the report. If there's any questions, our monthly report, let me know and I'll answer them.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for him?
Okay, great. That was very helpful.
Thank you, Bill. All right, township engineer.
Yes, thank you. So I've been in contact with Dolly Construction, who will be working on the Paul Lehman project. They've been preparing submittals to us and shop drawings. We've discussed with them on what is their anticipated start date. They are suffering with supply issues, et cetera. And they said that they are planning to start construction in mid-October. So we're trying to determine whether it's the 17th to the 31st is the window that they're going to start. The one concern that we told them is that when you start to push into that time, you're dealing with paving concerns, temperature-wise for the pavement to take onto the road, let alone the fact of getting pavement or asphalt, because a lot of plants don't open when the temperature is. And I don't think this project would necessitate a plant opening. But they would be required to bring it up, any kind of trench all the way up to the binder course. And if there was a delay, then the top coat would be applied unless the weather broke. So that's pretty much where we are right now with Paul Lehman.
Do we have any, do you have any information on the? Pollution? Pollution reduction?
The MS4 program?
No, the pollution reduction.
Yes, I spoke to Lori about this over the summer. We were concentrating on the MS4, but the PRP plant, we do want to discuss that and evaluate what's going on there. Because the challenges with the PRP plant as it's presently constructed is that the areas that we would need to, the different options that were given to the township, don't make, are going to be, don't make a lot of sense. It would be like reforesteding a forested area, installing stormwater management within lands of Valley Forge National Park. All of which is a challenge, but the way that the PRP was set up in the areas that you could do it, it was very isolated locations that the township could do. And as I spoke to Lori briefly about this very topically, obviously, I think we need to have a good conversation with the DEP and get an understanding of where we go here. Because a lot of the solutions to do this don't make a lot of sense. And trying to get land from the Valley Forge National Park, I think that would be very challenging.
So I thought there were some deadlines for this that were coming up. Am I wrong about that? Or was that scratched because of COVID?
It was the 2024, the PRP plan has to be fully executed. So the MS4 plans, we.
So we have two years for that then?
Yeah. And that's why when we were looking at that and we were trying to figure. It started out, I wanted to take a look at that and try to figure out what the costs were going to be fiscally for the township. Because again, this is something the township has to do, but it's getting funds from the government. And then when we really started to dig into it, I was, I thought this, it was kind of like we're going in a nonsensical direction. And that's where I wanted to talk to Lori and say.
Well, you know, just for some historical background here, we felt this way right from the very beginning. This isn't, this isn't new.
Yeah.
So this is not a new feeling. Because of the property, because of the watershed and because it's Valley Creek. It's. And our, and the township's location next to Valley Creek, none of this ever made any sense that we would have to participate in this. But we do.
Yes, and that's what I would agree with.
The solutions just seemed nonsensical, but that was. Everyone agreed with that. So you're not alone in that, so.
Yeah, so we want to take a look at that. We want to have some conversations, then we can talk it again with the board on me. Again.
And it was also private property too.
Yes, there's a multitude of concerns with this. And again, it's just a challenge where they are requiring the township to do it. The township has a lot of areas that you could do it, but they want it done here, and that's where the problem is.
Exactly. Okay, all right.
And specifically, Valley Creek that we have, that's.
Because it's an exceptional, exceptional value creek or water.
Watershed.
Waterway.
Water.
We're required to do pollution reduction controls on any land that's attached to an exceptional value creek. And that's the only place in Schuylkill Township where we touch an exceptional value creek.
Okay. I had read something, I was just looking at something that I thought it was for impaired waters, but it's for maintaining exceptional value, exceptional value waterways, okay.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, great. All right, moving on, board discussion items, old business. Update and discussion on the Act 209 Transportation Impact Fee Study. Lori?
All right, so we have discussed this previously. This is the transportation impact fee ordinance that the township has been working on via the TPEC committee and the study. So we are at a point now where we're about midway through the budget for that project and we're just at a place that we need to evaluate whether or not we want to continue on and complete the study and implement the fee, the ordinance, or if we want to take the information that's been collected and pivot and go in a different direction. The reason that this question is coming up now is because the results of the analysis that identify what, how many potential developments would apply to this fee schedule came back less than were estimated and less than they typically see when they do these types of studies and implement these fees.
If I can jump in, one of the.
Bill, you need to talk louder.
Okay, one of the areas for residential is potentially not available. Two areas for commercial depend upon, you know, projections of growth within the next ten years. And there's been no growth for the past, I don't know, I picked a number, fifty years. So it was a bit disappointing that if we go through all of this and get the ordinance in place, that we might not be able to recover the amount put out to put the ordinance together in a reasonable amount of time. And that's basically because the township was almost built out. There are also specific limitations on how the money can be used. For example, if the intersection involves a state highway, maybe you're already into this. Then only fifty percent of the funds collected under the ordinance may be used. The rest must come from grants or from township general funds. And in order to use these funds, they must be collected and the work must be done in a way that's relative to the actual development. So we learned in this process that you can't collect a fee from one side of the township and then apply it to another township, another intersection. They have to be generally related to the development. We met with Chad and we asked him for a good estimate of how much money the project will ultimately generate. And his answer was, well, who knows? It depends on how much development you get. But he did focus on those three areas, two small industrial or commercial areas and one residential area. And then we had a further discussion where we expressed concerns about whether, you know, those projects would go forward. So what he said essentially was that we may have missed the boat in terms of timing for this proposal because we were pretty much built out. He was surprised by how little ground was available for ultimate building. And as Lori mentioned in her memo, there are some concerns about collecting enough money to do a project. If you don't collect it, there are some obligations to return funds if they're not spent in accordance with the requirements of the Act. So for sort of the crossroads, there are deadlines that must be met in order to comply with the schedule set forth in the ordinance. So we're calling it to your attention to see whether you wish this project to continue, to stop, or to whether modify it so that we obtain a comprehensive traffic study of the township that might be useful in grant applications. That's pretty much where we are.
So I mean, I understand that we don't have a lot of, you know, virgin soil left in the township, but even a change in use of a currently, a current commercial property. You know, I'm thinking of Chick-fil-A, right? You throw a Chick-fil-A where there's a dentist office. That's going to perhaps necessitate a traffic study to determine what the impact is going to be on. Pick any other popular business.
I don't know. New development is what, you know, is what the ordinance is designed to deal with. If there's a property that's already generating traffic and the change is from a McDonald's to a Burger King or something, I don't know that we'd be entitled to collect a fee unless there's an increase in the traffic.
I'm not, so I'm going to try to phrase this so I'm not picking any particular business. But if you had a dentist office that's now turned into a childcare center, right? And you know that there's going to be lots of, an additional traffic between, you know, 7:00 AM and 8:00 AM versus, and, you know, 5:00 PM and 6:00 PM. That's dramatically different than maybe one visitor every half hour, right? Previously, you're saying that we could not apply that? The ordinance wouldn't permit us to do that?
I don't know. Nothing's been mentioned in this process about that. We were told that in general, it's for new development of vacant land, is what I've been told. I can check to make sure, but the change in use of a commercial property to a different commercial property might not trigger. I could be wrong.
Would land development trigger it then?
Sorry?
Land development, like land development application, like if somebody added a new building, some divided a commercial lot and put a new building on.
I think that if the addition will cause increased traffic.
But not a change in use or tenant.
A change in tenant wouldn't affect it.
Yeah.
But if you consider what Danielle just suggested, with how this money would be calculated, isn't that based on the number of units?
Yes. It's based on the number of units and it's based on whatever's permitted by current zoning.
Right. So if what Danielle is suggesting, you're only talking about one unit?
Yes.
So even if it is applicable, Danielle, it would only be one unit?
And what they identified is that typically at this stage, when they do these studies, they see anywhere from 500 to 1,000 units, and our study identified less than 300.
You're saying the cost to continue one would probably be more than we would like to.
Yeah, the question is whether or not the ordinance will end up really being useful for us.
And it's because we're constrained by what, the power that we've been delegated under the statute, we cannot apply it to change in use or, I just want to understand.
I don't know the answer.
Yeah, I don't know if it, I don't know if it specifically applies to a change in use. It specifically applies to development and it would apply to redevelopment, but it's still, I don't know if that would necessarily change the number of units that are being identified. I can ask Chad.
I mean, you can very easily imagine a chiropractor's office now being turned into a Starbucks. And we would want, probably want to have a tool in our toolkit to be able to determine what impact that's going to happen, have on traffic patterns.
Our experts didn't go into that.
No, they didn't.
They didn't go into it because it wasn't available to us or it was just not covered. I don't know. We were told there were three areas that were the, you know, the principal drivers of this and the numbers were not great in those areas.
Because this, now I don't, I don't know if they, it would depend on the zoning, I guess, to whether or not. In that example, they are only looking at what's currently permitted. That's all they can analyze. So they can't take into, they can't take into account if somebody were to ask for. That might be why it's not included, because they were not taking into account anybody proposing something different. They're looking simply at the zoning and areas.
It was land use.
It's land use, correct.
Not to change the use, but to take what's existing. And getting back to what you're suggesting, Danielle, correct me if I'm wrong. If you have a dentist office and now, and it becomes a Starbucks, wouldn't we have the ability to say to the Starbucks, you have to make improvements in the traffic around you in order for this to happen?
What this is for.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about without this. Wouldn't we be able to go to the Starbucks and say, look, you're here on this corner. You need to make improvements to this intersection.
Not on-site. The law is that we can compel onsite.
Yeah.
Onsite, yes, but not offsite.
Okay.
Not to the intersection.
And then these are mostly intersectional improvements for a township or state roads.
Now, that's the other piece of this too. So beyond the number of units that were identified, which was lower than they would have expected, the intersections that were identified for potential. have expected, the intersections that were identified for potential future improvements are almost all state intersections, which means we would only be able to apply 50% of the funds collected towards the improvements. We would have to fund the balance. The state would also have to agree to the improvement, so that adds another layer of complication into it. We also don't know at this point whether or not each of these intersections would actually be, we can only use the money if the improvements needed are due to future development. It can't be an existing deficiency, and it can't be, what do they call it? Future pre-development. It has to be directly linked to future development causing deficiency. So if all of these intersections already have issues, we can't use the money for that. We also can't use it to target any safety concerns. It has to be, it's specifically related to fu- future development congestion, basically.
Yes, it's, it's to solve congestion.
Correct.
Like to go from an...
Right.
A failing to a sort of passing.
Yes. So we don't know at this stage in the analysis whether or not the intersections that were identified, they suspect that they would likely trigger that, that they would likely be due to the future development. They think that it probably would qualify, but we don't know yet. We didn't get to that stage. That's going to cost another, we would need to spend another several thousand dollars to have them move to that. So the reason we're talking about it now before we do that is there's no real value to knowing that if we're not going to finish the study and implement the ordinance.
So the total cost is 6,000, you're saying, to find that out? And then, in addition to that?
There's more to finish the study.
How much more?
About, there's about, it was, the proposal in 2018 was for about 68,000, and in the budget left is about 33,000. So it's another 33,000 to finish the project.
Plus the sex.
I think that's included.
Oh, that's included in that?
But you're saying the business case just isn't there, is what you're, the, the odds are looking like the business case can't be built to have a payback.
That's, it seems like we have a lot of obstacles against us, that it might not be, we may not ever be able to collect enough money in fees to be able to put them to use. And there is a provision, now Chad did say, and I know, I mentioned it in here, and we've talked about this, eventually if that money's not used, there's a provision within the MPC that says we have to return that money, with, to pay it back to the developers if we can't use it. So whether it's, we can't get PennDOT to agree that we need to do the improvements, or we don't have the other 50% match, or whatever it may be, we have to give it back. Now, he, he has come across that in the past. That might not be a huge obstacle for us, but it's just something to consider. He seemed to think that there are ways to get around that, but it's just another point to consider.
And I find it really crazy with the statement that you said earlier, that if we're talking about a development that's over on this side of the township, that we can't use it to make an improvement on a, an intersection that's over here? Because we drive all over the township.
Well, it, it depends on whether there is a need, existing problem at that, you know, at that...
Oh, I see. Okay, okay.
It has to be tied to future development.
Development.
Correct. If we already have traffic concerns at this intersection, we cannot use...
Yeah, but it's still going to increase. It's, well, that's okay.
The analysis would have...
It's a poor argument. Yeah, forget it.
The analysis would have to show it or we can't use it.
Yeah, I know.
But if you, I mean, wouldn't almost any analysis show, so if you have King of Prussia, most people are, they're driving that way to go to work in the morning, they're driving home in the evening. So any additional development that's going to have, occur on the west side?
Right.
Some, I could draft an analysis that shows that that's going to impact an intersection in between King of Prussia and the western part of our township.
And that was the point that I was just trying to make.
So, I mean, what does the causal connection have to be? I mean, that, it's, I don't know, I'm hesitant, I'm reading this email, and I'm just hesitant to say that there's, there's, the projected, the five projected developments provided in the land use assumptions are based on current zoning are, you know, these three bulleted potential developments, right? The technical school campus, University of Valley Forge, residential development. This doesn't seem like a worst-case scenario. I mean, I can, I can imagine 20 years from now, we have a lot more than this development in our township, and I, I just don't want us to not do something today because we're not going to see an immediate payback within the next five years. I mean, we have to think long-term. What's...
And that's what they did look at. This is based on 10 to 15 years out. That's where the 300 units came from.
It just seems...
Well, are we going to get an answer on Danielle's earlier question about whether we can use it to change, develop, like if there's a new, and that would affect whether there's...
I will ask, yes, I will ask.
Does this make it our next meeting?
Um, we can, we're just running into, so we've already had to re-advertise this once and redo the whole land use assumptions report phase. So that's why Chad has asked us, because it is a bit time-sensitive. But I can get an answer to that. I don't know that it applies to redevelopment. I'll, I'll get a firm answer, but I believe you have called that out, had it been...
Can we answer this at our workshop meeting? Is that going to hurt him and hurt the timing?
I'll talk to him tomorrow and let you know.
You guys okay with that?
If we're not ready to make a, you know, if we're not ready to make a decision, we're not ready to make a decision, we just might have...
Because we've already spent like 30 something, like you're saying, we budgeted 66 or something, we've already spent 30. So I'd just feel like we should be thoughtful about whether we terminate it now, because we're going to just have lost 30,000.
Oh, absolutely. And the information that was collected so far, and that's the conversation that, that he and I had, and we had with Bill, it's not that we would throw it away, it's that we could take what he has collected, and it's, and if we look at this and say, it's, seems very unlikely we're going to be able to collect enough money to make this useful, they could take the information they've already collected, not do this next $6,000 step that's to identify, to rank the intersections, basically, to find out where we could use the fees, but they could turn it into more of a traffic study that we could use to seek grant funding to address things like safety concerns and conditions that exist now, existing deficiencies in our intersections that are not tied to future development.
We could do both. One doesn't, they're not mutually exclusive. Why couldn't we take that information and still seek grant funding to fix those?
The transfer, the, the traffic impact fee study that we're going to end up with is not going to be, would not be the same document that they would prepare for us if we were just doing a, a traffic study versus, this is a very specific process and procedure, and it's going to give us very specific data. If they turned it into a different type of product that would identify different intersections and wouldn't be tied just to...
But I wouldn't know, I wouldn't know any more about that too, though, because I feel like she's raising another good point, which is, like, geez, I'm a Toyota, if you already do all the work to get A...
Was it an additional $3,000 and then...
And then B, and then we get grants of 10,000 or 15,000.
And maybe that's where the money comes from, to fund the other 50% of the cost for projects that are on state highways.
Yeah.
I'd like, yeah, I'd like to know what the additional cost would be. If we were to go forward with the traffic impact study, the way that it was intended, the way it was received, and please others speak up, because I wasn't here when this was originally launched, this project, right, so...
And this is a tough one too, because the Open Space Commission's been successful in preventing developments, and they could be in the future. We don't know, it's a gamble. But I like what you're saying about reuse and commercial, you know, we don't know what's coming 20 years from now.
Change of use of a, of a property can significantly impact traffic patterns.
Well, I think we were, we were discussing, I guess we can talk about this in public, the Wawa proposal, do you think that would fit under the ordinance if, you know, depending on timing, when we follow the plan? So it is a, it's a similar use, it's a different building.
So we would collect, be able to collect a fee from that?
I think so, depending on timing.
So then what she is suggesting...
Well, it's, it's a different building, it's a different...
Yeah, I understand that, but that's what she's talking about.
But they would give credit for their existing traffic, with the increase in traffic that would be...
Right, yeah. But that's what I'm talking about. See, with the bank, the abandoned ghost bank building on the corner there too. I mean, if that got used for something else, like a Starbucks, I'm not saying, we, there's no Starbucks plant. I'm sorry, I keep talking about Starbucks, but I work next to a Starbucks.
Would you like a coffee?
I, I work, I have some, I work next to a Starbucks, and I can tell you that there are literally cars that are parked in the street in the middle of Lancaster Avenue. So I, I don't know, I'm just not ready to pull the plug on this today.
Let's get a better answer on this stuff and get back to you.
Yep.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So I think if we could get some of these answers by our workshop meeting.
And what about Martha's question? Can we add it to the workshop and talk about it a little bit there? Or is that not?
Yeah, we can talk about it at the workshop.
Okay.
As long as we advertise it, it's available to the public, people can come and listen to us discuss it.
Yeah, the workshops are all publicly advertised, so yeah, there's no issue. You just can't vote, but that's...
Yeah, unless we advertise it.
Unless we advertise it.
But I don't know that I...
It wouldn't be ready.
I don't know that you really need a vote for that.
I don't really, I don't need a vote, so we would be fine. Yeah.
Yep.
Any more questions about that? Any public comment?
Is Lori clear on the couple, the things that we're looking for more information on?
Yep.
New business authorization to advertise the Act 167 Stormwater Management Model Ordinance for adoption at the October 5th, 2022 business meeting. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board?
So the, I guess the only question I have is, we did talk about, Paul was going to get some different, additional clarification on, on the fees, that, the mechanism, I guess, for fining a landowner that does not comply with that second option, right? So there might be some additional verbiage that we need to put in to the ordinance. So if we vote to advertise that for adoption at the October 5th business meeting, we still have the opportunity to make those changes? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
We would adopt the version that we presented with on the night when we vote.
Correct.
So we can make, okay, so we can, okay, excellent. Thank you so much.
And I think I only have to advertise it...
Once.
Once, seven days.
Seven days.
Seven days before, but I need the authoris, I need a vote to be able to advertise it.
Okay.
And we have to adopt it at the October 5th.
Yeah.
Yes.
Meeting. But yes, we will make those changes, and then the version that gets published will incorporate the final language.
Thank you.
Any more comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consideration of acceptance of the 2023 Minimum Municipal Obligation for the Schuylkill Township Non-Uniform Pension Plan and the Police Pension Plan in the amount of $38,620 for the non-uniform pension plan and $143,180 for the police pension plan. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion to set dates for the 2023 budget meetings. Motion to authorize advertisement of special budget meeting dates.
What dates are good?
So...
So in the past, what we have done is, I'm pulling up my calendar here.
We did the workshops.
We did, what we've done before is, we would do our October workshop meeting as our first budget workshop meeting.
If we needed a follow-up, we scheduled another one for about a week later.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you, Mark. Then we would schedule the next one before our, our November board meeting.
Yep.
Because in November, then we have to advertise it for 30 days, and then we have our December adoption.
Yep.
So our October workshop meeting is October 20th?
Yep.
Do you guys have your calendars handy?
Harvey.
See, I should have stopped at Starbucks.
Well, I don't want to do it on a Friday, or Saturday, or Sunday.
I'll be away.
So, what's that?
On the 20th.
I'll be away on the 20th, yeah.
Okay.
October 20th?
We're looking at October.
Yes, we're looking at October 20th.
Is the 20th when we have our workshop?
That's our workshop meeting.
That's our regular workshop meeting.
So the other thing we can do is we can move it to like the 13th, and then have the 20th as...
If necessary.
If necessary.
Yeah.
13th's good.
I have a committee meeting, but Jonathan can attend, so...
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So October 13th?
So how about if we change?
Make the 13th the workshop session?
Yeah, make the 13th our workshop meeting.
Call it however you want, workshop.
What time do you want to start?
Is 6:00 PM? That's what I've seen, what you've done in the past.
Yeah, so we could run long. We ran, we ran pretty long on the last one. Went from like 6:00 to 10:00.
What is 6:00?
We also had a Friday meeting that night.
Is 6:00, challenging?
Uh, maybe, no, 6:00. I may have it.
At least six works per week.
That's, that's, that's fine with me, although I know I should have leaked today, so I'm not the most reliable one.
Are you guys okay with October 13th at 6:00 PM?
Yes.
Going...
And if necessary, or...
October 20th?
Which is already advertised, so it's already advertised.
So that one's...
Yeah.
And also at 6:00 PM or...
Well, that was advertised for 7:00, so it would have to be, unless I re-advertise.
No, that's okay, we'll just do it 7:00.
We shouldn't have a lot left, though.
Yeah, we're just going to say, 7:00 should be fine. I don't even think we'll need it.
We'll probably won't.
So then I will only need authorization to advertise October 13th?
Okay. I'm sorry, I want to put this in here. Give me a second. Okay. A motion to authorize the advertisement of the special budget meeting date October 13th at 6:00 PM. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. A motion to appoint Tina Stevens as our township secretary. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion to appoint Lori Getz as the Assistant Township Secretary. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wow, okay, let's move on. Tina, am I going too quickly for you?
Oh, no.
Okay, great. I tend to forget that somebody has to take minutes, and I just move right on. Okay, we have no resolutions or ordinances, we have no subdivision or land development, and discussion on agenda items for upcoming workshop meetings. So we, um...
So October we covered.
October we covered.
September, we had discussed previously, planning to discuss at the September workshop meeting, the board's priorities for the budget, so that we can, if you have special projects, anything like that, that, that we want to make sure get incorporated within the budget.
Yeah. You guys okay with that? Do you have anything else you want to discuss?
Um, we, weren't we going to have an update at some point on the, 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 the grant that we had received to put sidewalks on 23? Remember, there was the issue of whether we had to, whether we...
We did extend it.
We extended that?
Yeah. What's the deadline now?
It was extended, uh...
24?
Yeah, or 20, 23, we have a water extension.
I was at...
And there was a public meeting held with Gilmore, that's actually what those...
Those, yeah, the easel over there.
We held a public meeting with all of the neighbors that the Projectful Impacts of Gilmore is now working on individual property meetings with just a handful of residents who we still need consent letters from.
Okay.
So, that's where we're at.
Because I just had a resident complain to me recently because their car broke down, and they had to walk home along that stretch of road. And they complained that it's very unsafe, and I said that I would bring it up.
Yep. Yep. So, that's where we're at. So, it is moving. It's just going...
Yeah.
Okay.
The speed of...
Yeah. Just the speed of...
Molasses is faster.
Right, yes. Yes.
One other suggestion I have, and I know... And it's not controversial, but I just became aware that another garbage hauler is discontinuing single residence pickup. Do we just... Republic?
We just got a call about that.
Who is it?
It's Republic. And so, I think we're down to two in the township. I know that we've talked about this in the past, whether the township wanted to... There are things we don't do because they're bad ideas and there's things we don't, you know, but it might be worth discussing whether the township wants to just discuss a municipal contract. I know that that will cause headaches for township staff because people do tend to complain to the township when they have issues with their garbage hauler. But there are advantages to the roads for having fewer of these trucks on the roads. I don't know. It's...
Certainly something we can look into.
Residents, too.
Having come from a municipality that had single hauler recycling, it's extremely administratively time-consuming, but it is something we could... I thought there was a committee that was...
The EAC was working on this, but the gentleman who was doing that had to leave the commission.
Gotcha.
So, we have to have a gap there. So, we did understand that that's a good thing overall for townships, that there's a lot of cost savings. They can throw in some municipal trash hauling for us as part of that. It's better on for our roads, so it is supposed to be better. But I think there was some concern that our residents are kind of setting their ways, and they like their trash the way it's being done.
East Pikeville brought this up a few years ago, and they ended up with a hundred people in the building yelling at them.
But I have to say, like, I thought once you go right...
That's no reason to not consider it, but...
But once you get fewer... I mean, now there's fewer options, right? So, there's fewer and fewer... And I don't know. If you investigate it and you find out there's absolutely no cost savings to residents, that closes the book on the conversation. But if there was a significant cost saving to residents, that would warrant discussion.
Yeah, one of the things the EAC did is they took the Meadows off of Paulings Road, that development there, and they sent them a...
Survey.
A survey and asked them questions. And they basically came back, and I think it was like seventy percent said absolutely no way under any circumstances do we want a single trash hauler in the township.
Are you sure? I feel like we should get that information again because I don't think... I think they just said, like, what fact... I thought it was a more generic thing, like, what factors would you be interested in knowing more about? And it was kind of like, I wanted to have control over who my trash hauler was, and I'd want to have, you know... I think we might have to work around...
I am abbreviating that, but that was the extent of the survey.
I don't own stock in a trash hauling company. I just want to be clear. But I don't... I don't know.
And at least it is only two now.
Well, that's... But no, there's two that are offering that, the residential pickup. But Republic, in their letter to residents, stated that they are still available for municipal contracts. It's just not cost-efficient for... Does not... Doesn't make economic sense for them to contract individually with households. So...
Why don't we just... Why don't I ask the EAC at the next meeting where they left off? And then we can consider... Maybe we want to talk about it at the workshop. It's supposed to be a good thing, but we just have heard that our residents will not like it. But at the end of the day, five years later, we'll all be better off if we can get over that.
And if we find it's beneficial, and we have a hearing, and a bunch of people come in and yell at us, that's fine. I mean, that's okay. We've had that happen before, so...
But isn't there an immediate step where we could put it on a public agenda and say, we'd like to hear what residents have to say?
Yeah.
Before, you know...
So, we might want to be educated first, so because... We want to be able to say, like, listen, okay, you know, would you like to save a hundred thousand dollars on trash being hauled in the township? You know, because they're just going to come in and say, well, I like my trash being hauled on Sunday, and you might have it done on Tuesday. Or I like to put two barrels out, and you might only... You know, but we need to have the counter, you know, benefits, I think, ready before we have a meeting like that where we're really going to have it.
Absolutely. And just keep in mind, too, this is something that would have to be publicly bid.
Yes.
If not on an annual basis. I think you could get away with doing it every two years.
I was in horrible education over this.
Uh-huh, yeah.
I think the borough... Before the borough did their own... If I recall, it was not every year, but I don't remember what it was. Maybe our boroughs subject to something different than a second-class township?
Yeah. They are subject to different rules, but...
Okay. I just... I know when we lived in the borough, before they started collecting it themselves, we had one trash hauler that went out to bid, and it was... The price changed every couple of years, so it wasn't... It wasn't a yearly thing. Why are you smirking at me?
He hates this idea. I have so much...
I'd love to tell you my story, but I can't because bribery and ethics and all kinds of stuff go with it.
No, but I mean, I've just spoken... This is anecdotal, but I've spoken to people who live in other townships where their waste hauling is contracted through the township, and they like it. And they're actually... They're surprised that there are townships that don't do it. So, I don't know. I can... I guess I can see why.
You know, I think most people, at the end of the day, they just want their trash to go away. You know, it's just like stormwater. They, you know, they just want the stormwater to go away. But I think getting over that hump from where we are now to a single trash hauler, whether it's managed by the township or whether we still have it done individually through our homeowners, I think getting over that hump is going to be a problem.
Sorry for smirking, but when the trash doesn't get picked up, Lori's going to get called.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I recognize that it's...
And I've been called many times for recycling not being picked up, so I get it.
But I mean, you know, I just think that, like, again, as long as it goes away, most people don't really care who does it.
When you get the call, though, like, we have... I'm with the homeowners association, so we have a trap... We all get our trash hauled by the same place. And when I call the management company, they just tell me to call, oh, it's Republic. So, could we just say, hey, call Republic? Like, why does Lori take all those calls? Could we...
Well, they still call the township. Correct.
But we put those calls...
They probably won't make it to me direct. It'll be Tina now.
Yes.
Or you have something like on your automatic for questions about trash hauling, dial Option 6, and Option 6 goes straight to whoever our...
That would be your home number.
Okay. We can move along. Apparently, this is an extremely popular suggestion.
I don't think it's a bad discussion to have.
Yeah.
But I don't know that we need to discuss it in September or October.
Probably not.
Well, no, I mean, if Susan's going to...
Talk about that.
Yeah, if Susan's going to ask the EAC to take up the issue again.
No, no, I'm not going to ask them.
So, you volunteered to spearhead this?
Oh, they don't have an interest.
No. But I will ask them for any information they've collected so far.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we haven't needed this. Okay. Any other topics for our workshop? Okay. Moving on, announcements. In addition to the announcements that Bill mentioned earlier about the Police Association, I have here on Friday, September 30th, 2022, the Domestic Violence Center of Chester County will hold a tree-lating ceremony at 7:00 PM on the grounds of the Schuylkill Township Municipal Complex. Details will be available on the township website closer to the date. On Saturday, October 8th, the Fire Company Auxiliary is holding their lasagna sale. Order yours online at the Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company website. On Monday, October 10th, 2022, the Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company will hold their annual open house. Visit the fire company's website or the Facebook page for details. On Sunday, October 23rd, 2022, the Chester County Solid Waste Authority is holding a used bicycle and sewing machine drive from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM at the West Scotia Municipal Complex. Adults and kids' bikes and sewing machines will be collected and sent to those in need in developing countries around the world. Information on the drive can be found on their website. Do you have any other announcements? Rick?
No.
No? Okay. Sorry to be... Sorry to make you jump there. Does anyone else have any announcements they want to make?
I do. Sure. So, Ant Heart, which was already mentioned, they run the Code Blue Shelter. They are having their... I think they're fifth annual bed races in Phoenixville Borough on November 5th. They are... They're an organization that serves the greater Phoenixville community, including residents of our township. Last year, I was on the bed race team that raised the most funds. All the profits go to Good Samaritan Shelter and the Code Blue Shelter. So, I know we're a couple... A couple months away, but it's a great event. It's really fun, and supports a very, very good cause. You know, you guys could... I'm already on a team, but you could, you know, form your own team of supervisors and...
What's a bed race?
Oh, okay. So, we actually... It's hysterical. Peter Urscheler is the sort of the flag person. So, these are like heats. Each team builds a bed. We build... You'll go on Google Ant Heart Bed Races. It is hysterical. Every people dress in character, so we were Revolutionary War. I was Lady Liberty.
Okay. Yep, I've seen that. Yeah.
My torch. My friends were dressed up as George Washingtons. And we've had dentist offices that dress up like toothbrushes. We had CrossFit gyms that... The guys wear short shorts. It is... The local mountain biking team had a team last year. It is a very, very fun event, and we raised lots of money for the local homeless shelters.
Did you say October 5th?
It's November 5th.
November 5th.
So, I'll bring it up again, but it really is a great event.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other announcements?
The only thing I would just... You mentioned it earlier, but... Or one of us mentioned it earlier, but Planning Commission is meeting this month, and Wawa is presenting a sketch plan, so just putting it out there.
The Police Department and the Fire Department could have bed race teams and compete against each other. Just throwing that out there.
Yeah, we'll bring it up for the next one.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other announcements? Public comment? Come on up. Mr. Z, we all know who you are, but for the record, because Ms. Tina doesn't, can you make sure you tell her your name and your address, please?
You can just call me Ken. Mr. Zimmerman was my father.
Oh, okay.
But anyhow, Ken Zimmerman, 702 East Anderson Avenue. Quick question. The tiny little bridge on the corner of Penny Packer and White Horse that must have been demolished by a Bradley Fighting Vehicle or something. What is this future?
It's a PennDOT.
That's a PennDOT road? And so, it's a PennDOT-maintained bridge?
However... Oh, no, it's not the same one. We've notified them multiple times, though, about the condition of the bridge.
What did we hit it? Whatever...
Do we know what hit it?
I have no idea if it was hit or if it's just... I don't know. I'm not aware of anything specifically.
I think Hurricane Ida hit it.
It was damaged in the past six months.
Oh, was it?
Yeah. It was whole until about five or six months ago, so...
Been a long time.
It's been a while.
Is this a bridge that vehicles go over?
Yeah, it's the bridge coming down White Horse.
You probably don't even notice that it's a bridge.
From White Horse and 23 down towards the township building. There's that little bridge.
Bill, would you recall any horrific accident at that?
I think it was a slow deterioration.
It's right around the corner.
Just a slow deterioration. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Towards 23.
Any other public comment?
Pass the light and go on.
I'll make the motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.